I got Paul. January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, Jeremy Brown will be absent today and thank goodness. Well, I want Lauren to take over, but since I'm the vice, I get to. All rise. Let me, please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bear with us, we've got a stack of minutes to approve. We'll leave them off here one at a time. The dates, they're not in any order because I messed them up. Special session, January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Executive session, January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. A regular session on January the third. Executive session, December thirtieth of twenty-two. Emergency executive session, December thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. Year-end session commissioners, December thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Emergency session commissioners, December thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Regular session for commissioners, December fifth of twenty-two. And last is regular session commissioners of the November twenty-one of twenty-two. I've had a question to review. All right, we got a motion, a second, all in favor? Motion. All right. Uh, we got claims done, babe. As you can see there on the TV screen, Lauren, if you'd like to see. I would like to approve all of them as we let our staff know. All right, I have a motion, I will second that, Paul Bear. All right, motion passes. All right. Nine oh five, we're moving along. Carrollton Township Supervisory Board appointments. We had two, right?
I have letters from both of the individuals. So I can either read them or give them to whichever of you of them first.
How do you like to proceed? How many do you need today?
They're pretty short.
Okay.
The first one is dated January sixth. Please be advised that I wish to be considered for the vacant position on the Carrollton Township Board, Carroll County, Indiana. I have expressed my interest on two previous occasions to the Carroll County Clerk Sharon Milburn and expressed this interest to the Carroll County Commissioners at their meeting Monday, January third. I have served on the Carrollton Township Board for approximately twelve years. I have been a resident of Carrollton Township for over thirty. Thank you for your consideration, Richard L. Stout. And I did receive that on January sixth. Uh, I received the next one on January thirteenth. Um, I, Adam Butcher, resident of Carrollton Township, Carroll County, Indiana, would like to be considered for the Carroll County Commissioners for appointment to the Carrollton Township Board. I'm presently a registered voter as a Democrat, maintaining residency act. Let me get these addressed. I have previously served as a member of the Carrollton Township Board for the last four years. Sincerely, Adam Butcher.
So now it's up to the same room setter because nobody applied for this.
That would be correct. There is a vacant, there is a vacancy due to neither one of these two that were currently on the board, neither one ran. Uh, however, a newcomer ran, so there's only one position left. Um, it would have normally gone to a caucus, but since they re-represent opposite parties statutorily, you have to, uh, you have to appoint. And I have no recommendation. I don't think that would be a fair, fair thing for me.
Right. I appreciate that.
Gentlemen. May I be? My name is Lou Jim.
Good job.
I am the, uh, my name is Charles Ward, I am the trustee of Carrollton Town. Um, I took office four years ago at your request to Beth. Because we never had.
Because she signed up. It's not because Beth told you to do it.
Well, she, I was on the board previous and she kind of, yeah. Anyway, my opinion is, um, we have a lot of, our, our township board is very dysfunctional right now. Over a certain contract, and I won't go into detail. I think it's in the best interest that a neutral person being in it. And that would be Adam Butcher. He has no, I mean, nothing against Mr. Stout, great individual. But I think in the best interest of the township, I'm very transparent with this. In the best interest of my township, it should be someone that is not involved with any personal endeavors within the township. That's all I got to say. I mean, you guys are in position to pick the one you think is the best candidate. But I'm looking at how the township's operated. Scott, you know?
Well, I don't want what's best for the township.
What's better?
I want what's best for the township.
I do too.
As a township that my father grew up in, was killed. He moved to, he moved to Washington Township.
Did they have more, did they have more burgers and pigs at the time?
I would make to have.
More burgers and pigs, because I had that.
There was probably one on every farm.
Oh, yeah.
You know, things and chickens and milk cows back then. Because he worked, that's what he did, personally, no, it didn't. I would, I would feel that this recommendation comes best for the township. I don't want to keep us spoiling it all up so early.
Well, both people are very qualified. I won't say that, nothing in that sense. I just, just think that to move on and become a better township, we need to, we need to.
I don't know your situation, what you're facing in Carroll Township. I haven't been able to address that, so.
Well, I, I don't need, either, either party could do the job. I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that you want to get better.
So, and does Mr. Stout disagree with a lot of things? Or does Mr. Butcher agree with everybody?
Well.
Because you gotta have some.
You gotta have some discussion.
You gotta have discussions, or you just can't stand up and say, well, this is what I want, and you're my friend, and, you know.
Well, no, neither, I don't regard, I don't see anyone that's not my friend. What I'm saying is, I've had some controversies with Mr. Stout on, he has a personal, uh, he has a personal interest in one entity within my township. Okay? And every year, adventure time, it becomes an issue. And it just turns into an argument. Nothing's solved, it's politics. That's not the way around, you know, the government, where you're arguing all the time. I want a board to get them all, that I don't have the controversy I have now. Because technically, if I drop off the face of the earth, they're going to run it. So you don't need that controversy standing out there.
They're just running to the caucus, and then the caucus.
Well, yeah, but you know what I'm saying. I mean, they should, they should work together.
I don't think we can get to one of these two. I mean, dude, you feel like it's best for, I mean, as far as Carroll Township. She cares about the township as a whole.
What's that now?
And I, from my kind of here, it's a personal agenda, and I do that, but you.
Well, I don't have a lot of voters, okay? I have probably close to the biggest township, but I have more farm animals than I do people, okay? If I'm not, if I'm not working for the township, then I don't need to be in office. It should be all about the township. It shouldn't be about personal gains or anything like that. And, um, that's just the way I see it. Um, I don't know if that makes any sense to you, no, but it's, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I don't want to bring up any entities or anything like that because it's watering to the bridge, it's why I'm concerned. And like I said, either party could do the job. I just don't want to have four more years of controversy.
Does that have to be decided today? So we look at my best, so we need a person.
Realistically, I can, I, I've already approved contracts. I have two members on the board, so I don't need the third member unless there's, I make the decision if they split. But with the contracts I have, it's all been approved, so I have a majority.
That, that was what I was going to say. Statutorily, because he has a two-member board now, a decision does not have to be made today. But I would not wait too long in case there does become a problem on the board and one of them is unable to serve. You would still need a two-man board in order to pass the, whatever needs to be passed or approved.
I think it'd be nice to have our third member here today also.
Yeah. I know Mr. Stout reached out to, you know, getting into that point to show here. I don't know Mr. Butcher, I don't think they would know who he is. Because Mr. Stout was in there already, so we recognize him. I don't believe he. Um, he's one that showed interest by showing, that's what I'm going off of. Um, I understand he wants to make his township better and move forward.
Well, Mr. Butcher would be, it would have been your day if he runs a farm.
Right.
And he's getting his pigs in this week, so that, that would be the excuse I would give. I had talked to him this morning, and he said he was waiting on a shipment of hens.
Understandable. We have, Lauren.
Well, I think it's like that. And by then, they can change their mind, if you have a motion to table this decision until the last meeting, all the bears.
Sorry, young man.
Hey, no, you guys do your job.
All right. Nine fifteen, we're still going. We need to be a bear, did I say that right?
Yep.
Good morning, Jake.
Morning. Since the last time we were up here, two minutes ago at the joint meetings, where we presented some, uh, early estimates on the jail project. We've been working since then to refine those estimates. Moving out to some additional subcontractors for bids that had expressed interest, but for one reason or another, didn't turn in the number originally asked for it. And we were able to, to receive a handful, uh, bids more than we have, uh, which was very much positive to the number. And then we also have spent time with subcontractors doing scope reviews and, uh, asking them for what we call value engineering. So when their items within the design, uh, is a better way to do it. That doesn't necessarily impact the overall scope, but, um, provides value to the project in form of cost savings. So I'll, uh, give you kind of comparison of what we have here. So, um, previously, we had presented a cost for the jail project of twenty-five million, nine hundred ninety-one thousand, change. Uh, with the addition of the utility extension, that's off-site, a one million, one eighty-eight. That put a total cost with utilities of twenty-seven million, one hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred dollars. As you can see through the additional bidding and scope reviews, our current estimate is now twenty-five million, four hundred and sixty thousand. We've received, I think, two or three additional bids in the concrete trade. One of which was a good savings. Same as well as general trades, which is a conglomerate of packages that are in the general trades contract. We also have decided to break out the kitchen and laundry equipment. Originally, that was in the general trades, but we found that we purchased that direct and moved through the general contractor to save the county some money. And then in our detention package, we also were able to get that scope reviewed and save some money. Netting a, a large savings. Want to note that within that twenty-five, one, four, five, there is still eight hundred and four thousand dollars of contingencies that, again, being of the project, those that could not be spent, we will spend some, whereas do, um, get returned back to the county. So with that, it's not the only good news we have today. We also went through, um, some value engineering. I won't throw this on this, on there because it's very, um, tiny. But we had about almost, let's just say thirty-five items of, of different things that we've looked at that we said, um, we think should be considered from a savings perspective. And what we've done here, um, the description item is, is something that we can look at. About halfway over on the page, there's a yes, no column. And if it has a Y in it, we're saying that that makes a hundred percent sense to just implement into the project. You know, you won't necessarily see any differences when that's in there. And, and therefore, that puts that potential deduct in, in the project. And so if you go through, um, happy to go through any of the details here, but, um, if you highlight all of the yeses that we think make, uh, make the most sense to implement into the jail project, it's a total savings of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which would put the current total down to twenty-four million, nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand. I know when we, we were in our joint meeting, we had some challenges and we said, you know, we feel confident that we can probably get down to that twenty-five million dollar number. And we've done that. There are, um, other items that we're still looking to get pricing on that may provide additional savings from there. There's still the option, Steve, that you mentioned about potentially having the county pave out there. Right now, we still have to pave in the, in, in the number. That value, um, to the, to the job is three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. There's ways to reduce that, whether we pave it or not, because there's, there's a drive that circles the entire property more for public department access, that's, it's not required to be paved all the way back there, it could be distanced. So that could reduce that number, but we also understand that whether we do it in our contract or the county does it, it's still a cost to do it. But that's something to tough talk about, that many, you know, you guys may say the county can pave it for less than that. But we have it in our currently prepared name, that would be in addition to this. Other ones that we just, we need to, we need to vet them a little more and maybe talk to the architect, uh, and the Elrados group to, to get there. So that being said, um, that's kind of what we've been working on, on the construction side, is to try to get the costs down. While doing that, we, um, from our last discussion, uh, you guys agreed to help, allow us to bring Bear to the table. And so they've been working on it. We've had meetings with them and with Baker Tilly and Barnes and Hornberg to look at the financial situation for the county and the various funds. And, um, let, uh, let them talk through kind of what they have, uh, come up with. So while we were looking to bring costs down, they were looking to see where the money potentially could come from. And I think we've got some positive news to share.
Yep.
Chairman.
Yep, absolutely.
Uh, my name's Josh Chinak, I'm with Robert W. Bear. He's a, we engage as an underwriter for this financing. Um, just going to give you a quick update, I have a sheet here, I'm going to walk you through it. Feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions, be happy to answer them at the end or in the middle. Um, so the main repayment source for these bonds that we believe that we, um, is the benefit of the county is to use the C and R local income tax. It's also called the jail lit, is what a lot of counties call it. Um, but both that and the certified share as a local income tax would be secured, the bonds would be secured by both of those local income taxes. Uh, we were told that the county did not want to use the added local income taxes, so we took that completely out of the financial structure. Um, we've also looked at a couple of different things to lower the borrowing cost of the bonds. Uh, one way you can do that is to get rid of capitalized interest. Um, you know, lease financing, you have to have an interim lease asset or to capitalize interest, which means basically to borrow for the interest cost, um, upfront. Um, and we would like to propose to use the existing jail facility as the interim lease asset. And then we can switch that over to the new jail once that has been constructed. Um, so that's a good way to save between five hundred thousand and a million of borrowing costs right upfront. Another way to do that is to get rid of the reserve fund. Um, we believe with local income tax, we can work with S and P to get rid of the reserve fund. Um, there's a couple of things we need to look at, but that is, this is quite feasible and we've done it a few times recently. We believe that's, that's very possible. Um, so that's another variant to lower the borrowing cost. Um, and then the other thing is to utilize a early call feature. Um, kind of a standard call feature that we see for many municipal bonds is a ten-year call. Um, we're going to try to shorten that up to an eight-year call. Um, that kind of gives you the benefit of being able to either refinance if you have, there's a lower rate of time, where you're also able to, um, pay off the bonds quicker after those eight years. Um, so when we're looking at it with the, this jail lit, if we solely used a jail lit to repay these bonds, uh, we have run a couple of simulations in the last couple of weeks to, and we believe that, um, using that jail lit, you'd be able to repay those bonds before the final maturity. Um, our final maturity right now is twenty forty-seven. Um, but we believe if you utilized all the funds for the jail lit, you could pay off these bonds by twenty forty. Um, we're still kind of working through that structure, but, um, we believe that that's quite feasible, um, right now. Um, and so a couple of other updates, um, for a final maturity of two-one at twenty forty-seven, so that's a twenty-four-year financing and borrowing. Uh, we believe the interest rate is about a four oh eight. Um, I think that's kind of important to mention because, uh, we've seen a little bit of a, interest rates have moderated a little bit um, in the last month or so. Um, and we have not really seen that for, it seems like eight to twelve months now. So, um, as, as we see interest rates come down a little bit, it's important to note that, uh, maybe a, a quicker or more aggressive timetable might be beneficial to the county to be able to lock in that lower interest rate, um, and, and try to save some money that way as well. So that's kind of my update for you. I also have the source of the funding, and what the bond proceeds are, and then what, um, some of those funds on hand that we have estimated. And that's been working, maybe with Baker Tilly to kind of come up with those. Um, so that's kind of a broad stroke summary of where we're at right now, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Appreciate you coming on and.
Yeah.
I think, I think you're going to be on the council.
I will be here back on Thursday, yes, for the joint meeting. Uh, Mike, can you go over this again and any other updates we have? Until then, I have to.
That information you gave us will be more interaction to them than it is.
I think the, the important thing, so the main thing we wanted to do today was at least, I introduce you to Bear and their team and what they've been working on, the rest of the team has already been involved with Baker Tilly. Um, but more importantly, understanding that's, that's really council's role, is to figure that out. But we feel we do have a solution where we're below twenty-five million in, in cost and we think we're going to continue to have a little bit coming off of that. But we have a solution that with current funds and, and borrowing strategies that would get, get the county that twenty-five million. So it makes this project a lot more viable from where we were, you know, almost a month ago in your joint meeting. We'll both be back at the council meeting on Thursday to present us. I think our focus with, with this board is, is more on the scope of the project with those potential BE items and we're going to continue to bet on. I, I do think because, as Josh mentioned, time is of the essence. We don't know what interest rates will change, they may get better, they could easily go up.
Last month, what he said, dude, they're going up.
Yeah.
They're going up, and they have been, but we've seen some moderation there, so it's, you know, important to move quick sometimes.
This paper here you gave me for the things that we could or could not do, would you give that to the sheriff?
Not yet.
Can I have, have a look at it?
I will.
Because I want their, their input on stuff that we're going to eliminate.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of this would not negatively, negatively impact any of what he does, but we will, we want to go through that. The other thing, time is of the essence, is these subs will only hold their bids for so long for us as well. So, um, we would probably recommend, if possible, we're going to meet council on Thursday. If there was any way we could potentially get a joint meeting, um, you know, middle of next week, it would have to be an early evening, um, where we could get everybody together and we could finalize the scope and finalize this financial strategy. Because there, there may be opportunities for us to save a little bit more money, we could, we could. But there's also the alternative that Jay and his team of subs is going to come back and say, hey, that number isn't good because such and such manufacturer is implementing their pricing. We get those notices, you know, on a weekly basis for different things, so.
Well, depending on the council, you would say, too, just in your opinion.
We have had some one-off conversations with a few of the council, just to kind of bring them up to speed along the way as we were putting this together to see if, if it made sense. And the few that we have talked to would be open, open to that. But we don't, I think we only need, what, forty-eight hours to notice that kind of meeting? So we can wait till Thursday and, and bring it into, to their meeting and.
Twenty-six would be about the best date.
Yeah, twenty-fifth, twenty-six would be, would be fine.
Twenty-fifth, we're closing the appointments, so.
Okay, twenty-six, and we could do a five-thirty meeting or something, so it gives everybody an opportunity to get off work. I think it would be, it would be, if you, if you guys are fine with that potentially, we can pitch that in the council meeting, too.
What do you think, Mr.?
Yeah. On a respective schedule too. We'll do whatever.
You have to, you have council advisors, you know, lean together and move forward. I appreciate everything you guys are doing and you have done. Thank you guys because you worked hard for us and I really appreciate it.
Can you have two days to talk, so they can talk to the council about whether twenty-six is not okay?
Twenty-four? Fourteen minutes? That work with you? It'll work those days. I think it's a convenient day.
I think that we've given, you have drafted the B O T agreement.
Yeah.
I think it'd be helpful before then that we can get through any potential language. Just in case we do take action in that meeting to move forward. You can just have that prepared through all of that.
Is it going to have blanks filled in then?
The only, the only blank we would put in is an exhibit to it. So, that would detail out the costs, the schedule, and the scope. So that's, that's a little to be determined based on the conversations we need to have with sheriff. And then, the rest of the terms are...
Right.
That's where we'll be focusing on.
So they won't be approved immediately then? Not, not on the twenty-six matter of when?
But, I mean, if we can get through the review of these costs, yeah, we could potentially offer that to be approved at that time.
Well, it would need to have that before the next two...
Yes. What I'm getting at is I don't want to wait till the twenty-six and then like, okay, let's go. And then we gotta wait another couple of weeks to get it...
So there's going to have to be decisions made between now and the twenty-six on that, on that, the items on that list. Is that correct?
Then you can do that to be in our opinion.
All night?
To the morning, right? One person?
Ten o'clock.
Well, they're going to have to meet again. So you're, what you're talking about, joint meeting?
I think that's always...
But they, there's going to have to be some less than majority of commissioners involved with the sheriff on addressing those points and that the yes or no things in order for them to be able to do the exhibit that goes to, into the B O T agreements. As large as you can, you can't, sign a agreement with white.
We're willing to do whatever they...
So you may want to do, say something about that now, since you're not going to have another, you're going to join you on the...
I can go through the basic ones that get us under that threshold. We can always take stuff out of the contract after.
No, I've got a question. I need to know, I didn't want to bring it up, but I'm not sure the highway department, because highway department uses gas tax. It's not properly supported in your one. We can't use county decisions, the towns can't use their gas tax money to do public mortgage projects. That's...
We still have it in the contract.
It was in the contract. I think that's not going to be possible for the county to do that work legally. But those other things, if there's a way that the board, if you and sheriff can go through that list, they can do that exhibit, you know, you can have a complete agreement to consider on twenty-six.
What about the sheriff's got time, we can probably leave it in the day.
And we can propose those things within a agreement. Again, we're not putting, I don't think any of these would be an issue.
But there needs to be some board input before that's put together, you know? I won't make that decision what, what that is.
So we need to get it put together.
Need, need you to have this. Maybe, maybe a commissioner with B W and sheriff, you're on the line or, you know, to do it on a phone call, you know, just talking to the phone call. You just can't have all three commissioners on involved.
Steve, you want us to set up a call, you and the sheriff and us, and just go through the list? I'm assuming you guys are going to rely on the sheriff for the scope.
My issue is that it might be working well.
Well, if we did it after...
After you're through?
Yeah.
If he's available to do it, come on up and work with him. He's got the job. I'll do it with him.
Let's try that.
You got my number?
And I don't know, this means you have to be short. I don't know if you want to hang around for a while and just add it on to this agenda to go through this, actually get through the rest of this.
You get something?
I just all of that.
Captain's saying glance of him right here.
Yeah, that's great.
Good idea, dude. All right.
Thanks for the time.
Thank you. All right, now the other commissioner actions, area plan appointment. We have, three, four, five. Mike does not give a chance to call. He emailed me or sent me a text or something, I can't remember what it was. Said he was very interested in John. John Downey? It looks like it says this is rare table one. So what you're, you know, rebel's family? They show my interest. You know, I need to start communicating with you. Hey, did you get communication? Did I get it, Mr. Bailey? No, I did not. I didn't re- mail it. I did not. Did you that?
I don't believe I did. I don't, I don't want to be in the office.
It's like you know, it's good to... He knows kind of what's his best interest. I think, yeah, there must be lots of some of those that Jeff has experience with. I'll give this a talk to Jeff. The other event of the experience. So, I'm not close, but John Downey, this is your... Hi, I'll just reread his email. Could you pick that up?
Hi, could you explain a little bit about who John Downey is, where he comes from, what is his experience? Please.
You need to go ahead and finish this. I'm going to read the whole thing. John Downey, so gentlemen, this is what we received, of course, by truth. If I may, is to my understanding, there's a, there is a possible upcoming open on the plane commission for Carroll County. I would like to offer to you and the county opportunity to work the current team on the commission. With my background in building materials industry for over thirty-five years, with which I've given codes and compliance, testing along the product development that benefits you. I will also include that with my time in Pennsylvania and being on the upper posture township zoning board, this will help the pallet planning commission can present to the zoning board a proper manner to request new zoning, R one, R two, commercial, or multifamily. In addition to upper posture township, I was the president of upper posture township, helping involve the fire department. For me, on any plane commission, I must work with any and all fire departments, replacement and fire hydrants across two of the new developments, commercial construction, replacement, or as mentioned, planning and fire go together and to have a safe community. I would also like to have a conversation with the three of you, and even a county solicitor, about why Carroll County is not following the two thousand eighteen I D C code. Yes, building codes that are adopted by the state of Indiana in two thousand twenty, which are changing to two thousand, two thousand twenty, beginning in two thousand twenty-three, is conversations with homeland security that underlies these codes and compliances. In the attorney general's office of Indiana, I have the codes for both residential and commercial available for year to year. And as current with the codes and Carroll County not having a building inspector and we are not talking a county, please. According to the state law, homeland security, all inspections are performed by the president of the county commissioners if there is not a paid code enforcement officer for a third party code inspection and so forth. With the new, with the coming new codes for two thousand twenty-three buildings, must meet energy codes meaning on its home, law inspections, crossface inspections, et cetera. And they must be signed off before the builder is allowed to move forward. This is very important for the county and expansion. I know I have mentioned a lot, and I want to thank you briefly. I'm looking forward to hearing back from you and speeding matters with our next steps. Thank you, John Downey. New business adult manager of North America Panasonic Industrial Devices Sales Company of America, Blue Chain and Building Products Division.
Where does he live?
He lives...
Just township, you know?
Oh, he's a, Jeff, Jeff Township.
Thank you.
And he grew up in Howard County.
Does any motion to appoint?
Yeah. He contacted me a long time ago and he was complaining about things he'd seen at that place. And not done, the code was not done right. And so I said to him, I said, well, he's selling a candidate for their area plan. So that's how I found out that he's really interested. But he is interested.
And how do you spell that last name?
D O W N Y. N Y.
Thank you.
I think I'll second your motion. You could have a change in the area plan.
Jeff, he's the...
Jeff doesn't want us to do it.
It's a conflict there. We got a risk.
So, I'll second your motion, all clear? Motion passed for John Downey to be on the area plan?
So he will be at their meeting in a couple of weeks this month? Great.